I will call this special meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order. Rita, would you please call the role?
Grant Foster?
Present.
Keith Furman?
Present.
Barbara Harrington McKinney?
Here.
Randy Udell?
Here.
Christopher McHale?
Here.
Tom Wilson?
Here.
Balthazar Deanna Santana?
Here.
Margaret Bergamini?
Here.
Badrida Lencala? And Carolyn McAndrews?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, so the meeting, the board is in order. A few notes on logistics for the evening. We will have a short presentation from some of our staff members that will be interpreted, and then we will go into the public hearing. We will not be voting this evening. We will be voting on the amendments a week from today, June 6. Want to go ahead and interpret that?
Buenas noches. Ya tenemos en este momento quorum para empezar nuestra reunión en la noche del día de hoy. La reunión consiste en una presentación corta de algunos de los miembros de nuestra mesa. Estas, estas presentaciones van a ser interpretadas al español consecutivamente. No van a votar con respecto a las amendas de lo que se revise o se hable hoy. Esta votación definitiva tendrá lugar el próximo lunes 6 de junio.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep my comments more brief in between letting you interpret. So, we will begin with a short presentation from staff before we do that. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board?
Vamos a empezar con los comentarios de nuestros presentadores en la noche de hoy. Hay algún tipo de comentario, excusa, alguna cosa que quiera declarar alguno de los miembros de nuestra mesa en este momento? O alguno de ellos tiene que excusar por algún tipo de razón con respecto a la participación esta noche?
Seeing none, we will begin with our first item for the evening. Legistar 71227, adopting the Metro Network redesign plan public hearing. We will begin with a short presentation, I believe, Justin Steinberg from Metro.
Justin Steinberg, de la corporación Metro Transporte de Madison, va a ser la primera persona que va a hablar en la noche del día de hoy para darle comienzo a esta reunión que tiene como título "El rediseño del sistema de transporte metro".
That was held on May 16, and we will give you a short update on a few new things that came up, and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Todos estos planes se pusieron en los archivos en 6 de mayo. Ha habido algunas actualizaciones pequeñas. Vamos a actualizarlos con respecto a estos cambios hoy, y después vamos a poner en marcha esta reunión con los comentarios para la reunión pública.
As part of the public hearing, we will do the Spanish-speaking public comments first to ensure that they can be translated, and then we'll go to any other comments. And the translation will move to a conference call for those who wish to continue to follow.
En esta noche vamos a primero que todo darle paso a los comentarios de las personas que hacen sus comentarios, preguntas o inquietudes en español. Van a ser interpretados consecutivamente en esta plenaria. Después de que todos los comentaristas revisados en español terminen sus comentarios, vamos a pasar todas las personas que necesitemos continuar oyendo esta reunión a una línea telefónica en español en donde el resto de la reunión de esta reunión pública va a ser traducida simultáneamente.
And then I'll pass to Tom Lynch for a short introduction.
Tom Lynch va a tener la palabra para su presentación y para presentarse él mismo.
Thank you. The Transit Network redesign study was incorporated in the 2020 capital budget to address longstanding concerns regarding the existing transit network.
Este plan de rediseño de la red de transporte fue un estudio incorporado en el presupuesto capital del año 2020 para poder empezar a tratar con las preocupaciones y problemas que se han tenido a largo plazo con respecto a la línea de transporte, red de transporte que tenemos en este momento.
In 1998, Metro implemented the current transit network, which used transit transfer points.
En 1998, la ciudad incorporó el sistema de transporte con la red que tenemos en este momento que se basa en puestos o sitios de transferencia.
It allowed more coverage, but ended up having longer travel times and required more transfers.
Lo que se logró fue un cubrimiento más amplio de la ciudad, pero acabó causando demoras y las rutas se volvieron muchísimo más largas.
From an onboard survey in 2015, the current transit system, African-Americans transfer three times more frequently than white riders.
Nosotros hicimos una encuesta de las personas que se montan y usan la red de transporte, y nosotros nos dimos cuenta que los usuarios afroamericanos se transferían tres veces más que los usuarios blancos.
Hispanic riders had 1.5 times the transfer rate as non-Hispanic.
Los usuarios hispanos tienen una rata de 1.5 veces mayor de transferencias que los usuarios no hispanos.
On-time performance, transfers don't affect everyone equally.
Nosotros también sabemos de cuál es el desempeño de que la red opere a tiempo, y sabemos que las transferencias no afectan a todos los usuarios de forma igual.
On-time performance causes some to miss their transfers.
Y nosotros sabemos que este desempeño de estar siempre a tiempo hace que algunos usuarios pierdan sus transferencias.
If they arrive to their transfer point one or five minutes late, they have to wait another 30 minutes before they can catch their connecting bus.
Lo que causa que si ellos llegan al punto de transferencia por un retraso en su ruta de uno a cinco minutos más tarde, tienen que esperar 30 minutos al próximo bus para continuar su ruta.
The current transit system, African-Americans experience trips longer than 45 minutes, almost three times more frequently than white riders.
Sabemos que con todo lo que hemos dicho, los usuarios afroamericanos experiencia viajes, tienen experiencias de viajes de 45 minutos o más tres veces más frecuentemente que otros usuarios.
Hispanic riders had trips longer than 45 minutes, 1.5 times more frequently than non-Hispanic riders.
Los hispanos, usuarios hispanos experimentan viajes de más de 45 minutos, 1.5 veces más frecuentemente que los usuarios no hispanos.
It is these problems the Transit Network redesign is trying to fix.
Estos son los problemas específicos que este plan de rediseño de la red de transporte metro está tratando de cambiar.
Now I'll turn it over to Mike Chekvala.
Mike Chekvala va a hablar a tu seguido.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Chekvala from the City Transportation Department and Metro Transit.
Yo soy, buenas noches a todos. Yo soy Mike Chekvala. Yo trabajo con la red de transportes de Metro de la ciudad.
This is the draft's network plan. That was a first draft that was an outcome of the Transit Network redesign study.
Nosotros hicimos un estudio de rediseño de la red de transporte. Después del estudio de rediseño, nosotros pudimos lograr hacer un borrador de el mapa del plan.
And the final plan will consist of this draft plan with several draft amendments. So you can see we have roughly 17 amendments scattered throughout the city.
Nosotros tenemos aproximadamente 17 enmiendas o cambios que se han hecho a este borrador inicial repartidos a través de toda la ciudad. Y este va a ser el plan final, el borrador más estas 17 enmiendas.
This document is on our website, and there are two minor changes that have been added to it, which I'll go through in just a second.
Hay dos cambios pequeños que se han hecho que yo quiero revisar aquí hoy. Esto lo encuentran ustedes en nuestro sitio de internet.
Okay, so the first one involves amendment number four, which adds a route on the south side of Madison, and go ahead.
Lo primero, y lo que estoy mostrando aquí, es una enmienda, que es la enmienda número cuatro, que lo que agrega es una ruta en el lado sur de Madison.
This is another option for amendment number four called 4E. It adds a different, it involves a different version of Route O that is longer and serves different neighborhoods.
Aquí estoy mostrando una alternativa a la enmienda cuatro, que la conocemos como la enmienda 4E. Esta enmienda lo que hace es, tiene una diferencia en cuanto a largo de la ruta cero, perdón, O, y lo que hace es que sea la ruta más larga pero que sirva un área más grande.
And the next new one is regarding the Southdale neighborhood. It makes changes to Route G, just south of the Beltline Highway.
Tenemos otras enmiendas que son cambios a la ruta G. Esa ruta G está desde el sur de la carretera Beltline.
This is a new option amendment 16C, which adds a longer loop to Route G, which travels farther west towards Skylane.
Esta enmienda lo que hace es que alarga la ruta G. Se llama la 16C, es una enmienda 16C, y lo que hace es hacer una asa mucho más larga, mucho más extensa para una ruta más extensa del sur que va más hacia el oeste, hacia el skyline.
And I'll now hand it back to either Tom Wilson or Mick Bruce, who will help us with the public hearing part of this.
Vamos a darle la palabra a otros comentaristas.
Thank you, Mike. So, I will now open the public hearing, and we will take Spanish questions first. If you are a Spanish speaker, please raise your hand, and we will call on you to speak. The public hearing allows five minutes for a speaker. Because we will need translation for Spanish questions, there will be a 10-minute total, including translation for Spanish speakers.
Muchas gracias, Mike. Ahora vamos a dar pausa a los comentarios públicos. De primera mano, vamos a escuchar los comentarios públicos de las personas o las opiniones o comentarios que tengan las personas en español. Los comentaristas van a tener un máximo de cinco minutos para expresar sus comentarios o sus preguntas. Los hispanohablantes, como necesitan la ayuda del intérprete, tendrán diez minutos para poder hablar. Esto incluye la interpretación.
Interpreta, quien sea que necesite hablar en español, por favor levante la mano o ponga la señal de la manita para que los identifiquen y puedan hablar. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Would you please ask one last time, and then we'll just go on with our normal list?
No vemos ninguna manita alzada. Vamos a hablar una vez más, y bueno, luego procedemos a la junta.
Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will just go down the list in order. First registrant is Helen Kitchell, 225 Potter Street, Madison, in opposition, wishing to speak.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Can you still give the Spanish line, in case anyone would like to listen in Spanish?
Yes, let me bring that up here quickly. Thank you.
Yes.
If you'd like to hear the rest of the meeting in Spanish, including the comments of others, please join our Spanish conference call line at 1-877-810-9415. Access code 1208794, or hashtag.
Si quieren escuchar el resto de esta junta en español, por favor, vayan a su teléfono y marquen el 1-877-810-9415 con el código de acceso 1208794, el signo de gato, y otra vez el signo de gato. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mick. All right, then back to Helen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, you've got five minutes. Go ahead, please, when you're ready.
Gotcha. Just a real quick aside about, I commend you for having translators at this meeting and all the other meetings I've attended. That has not been an option. One of the reasons you may not have participation is that I was not aware at the time when I registered for this meeting or when I saw postings for this meeting that those materials were bilingual, nor was that there would be a translator available. So I wouldn't be surprised if you haven't gotten participation because that may not have been adequately advertised. So that's an aside. That's not my, my comment is about actually the Route O 4E option. And the reason that I highly support that option as opposed to the 4D is it would only add five minutes to the entire route time, and it actually includes the neighborhoods of Ram's Edition and Capital View. And I don't know how adequate bus service to the south side would be without, with excluding those two neighborhoods. So I highly recommend that. It also goes over and sets up along Pittsburgh, or I mean, what, Pittsburgh Road. So anyway, I highly support that option. I feel like a lot of this has been rushed. I think a lot of these low-income, when the original redesign was proposed, I saw huge holes in both.
Welcome to AT&amp;T teleconference service. Please enter your access code.
Sorry. Anyway, so I, it was obvious that there were big holes
in both the north and the south sides of town, and the east and west, not as much.
So I think that that was a huge hole, and that we have been a very strong advocate for our neighborhoods, but I feel like maybe some of the other neighborhoods didn't realize the bus service they were losing. For me to have to walk from my house to Park Street, catch a bus, zipping by at 15-minute intervals, is fine, but it's a half an hour walk for me. So I think our bus service throughout the neighborhoods on the rest of that O route and then 4D covers all those neighborhoods. I think it's essential, and it needs to be moved forward. I understand why D is the staff choice, but it only adds five minutes, and it is the existing route that occurs and would allow for adequate bus service. And I think that it's essential because we have 70% of the people in the south Madison use the bus as their primary source of transportation. So I think it's a real key area that needs to have bus service. And I was glad to see that the bus ridership was considered in the original surveys, but I haven't seen that comparison of when the surveys were done in bus ridership and how that compares to bus, people that were bus-dependent, I guess is the way I should say it, to these, the new routes. And especially for us on the south side where BRT is, either may never happen or it's long for the future, we need to be maintaining as much local service as possible, especially if the goals of the city are to eliminate, you know, cars driving around. For a lot of people I've heard, well, if our bus route was eliminated, I'll have to drive. And that's not okay. And many of the people do not have that option and/or do not have the physical capabilities to be able to walk those distances to get to that Park Street. So I highly support that 4E. I would love to see this whole process kind of slowed down to accommodate and ensure that we actually are equitably providing bus service throughout town, not just the BRT routes, but those need to be, we need local bus service feeding to those BRT routes. So that's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Helen. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to share that the council updated our procedures related to public hearing time limits just maybe a month or two ago. So we're actually, public hearings are like other items at this point, which are three minutes instead of five minutes. I'm thinking we should probably just go with the standard that the council adopted.
Oh, thank you, Alder Foster. I appreciate that. Okay, so we will then go to the three-minute time limit for speaking, unless there is any objection. Alder Harrington McKinney, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I want to clarify is that we are receiving public comment. We are not asking any questions of the, of the present, not the presenters, but we're listening, but we're not actually asking any questions to the speaker. I just want to clarify that.
I don't see why we can't ask questions of speakers. So if you have a question for the speaker, I suppose now is the time to ask all the speakers here.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question for the speaker?
No, I just wanted to clarify that we can, and that option was available because there's some changes in terms of council, but I just wanted to make sure that we're able to ask a question of a speaker if that, if that is allowed.
Yes, thank you, Alder. I'll ask that at the end of each speaker's time. Thank you for that reminder. Okay, let me just check. No more hands. All right, we'll then move on to our next speaker, Sarah Bocher, 314 North Baldwin, Madison, Wisconsin, 53703, in opposition, wishing to speak. Sarah, they see you're ready. Hey, you've got three minutes. You're getting ready.
All right. Hello, committee and staff. It is good to be with you tonight. I am speaking as a primary frequent bus rider and a person with disabilities. But I am also unofficially advocating on behalf of a lot of people who I don't think can be here tonight. I like public speaking. I like politics, but I know that everyone, a lot of people don't come to hearings, so I'm thinking myself as my voice and the voice of others. This whole design, I know that there's been a lot of time and effort that's been put into it. But how things are, it's just, it seems to be efficiency, really an efficiency model. And efficiency is good. Eventually, having less cars in Madison is good. But there's a lot of different kinds of riderships, and the people who rely on the bus more are people of color, people in poverty, people with disabilities. And changing these routes to make them more, not efficient, kind of not going into the neighborhoods as much, having it longer for people to walk, doing that, I think is going to be difficult for a lot of people. Whenever anybody saw the flyer when I was on the bus, everyone I talked to just casually mentioned that they were against this. So I think you have opposition. It's great to do things like eliminate the transfer points and make things go more smoothly. But I really think that a lot of people will struggle with walking, getting there, learning new routes. Very frequently, people ask the bus driver, where does this bus go? What is this? What is this? And I feel that there are a lot of riders who even now have no clue what's going on. So I think it's very important to make sure that, you know, the carless, those who really rely on the bus routes, understand what's going on. I do think amendments would be better at this point. And I like the amendments that are there for the north and the east side. And I like it.
It's your time, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Alder Harrington McKinney, go ahead, please.
Yes, the speaker indicated that, she indicated that she had, I don't know if you said a disability and walkability. Could you say more than that? How are you navigating? How are you getting from point A to point B?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, yes, I do have a physical disability, and just walking long distances would Okay, yes, I, I do have a physical disability, and just walking long distances would be more difficult for me. Right now, I happen to have the privilege of living right across the street from a bus stop, and having work drop me off practically in front of my work. Oh, was I not unmuted?
Nope, we can hear you.
Okay, so that's, but I think that the bus stops will take a longer time. For me, I'm lucky, because I live close to an intersection, but for others who have more mobility issues than I do, I think that would be more of an issue. And just the fact that I don't drive, and so the bus is my main, main route of transportation.
Thank you, Chair, I'm complete.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. Okay, our next speaker then is Helen Kitchell, I'm sorry, Helen has already spoken. Our next speaker, our next speaker then is Ben Van Pelt, 1808 West Beltline Highway, Madison, Wisconsin, neither support nor in opposition, wishing to speak, representing SSM Health.
Thank you, Chair Wilson, really appreciate that, and thank you to all the members of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board for being here tonight. And I just really want to say thank you to the metro staff and all the city officials for their, their work on the metro redesign, and for answering the plethora of questions myself and our organization has had. As a quick introduction, my name is Ben Van Pelt, I'm the Director of Government Affairs for SSM Health here in Wisconsin, and as Chair Wilson already noted, I'm testifying tonight on behalf of my organization, and we will be asking for your support of Amendment 4D to the Metro Network redesign plan. I will note that we recognize that Amendment 4E has also been added, that, that kind of solves our main concern, which is service on Fish Hatchery Road, but that amendment was added after our memo and testimony were put together, so we haven't had a chance to review it yet. As the folks on this committee probably know, SSM Health is a Catholic nonprofit health system. We have seven hospitals here in Wisconsin, including St. Mary's here in the city of Madison. We have fourteen thousand employees in Wisconsin, and operate three clinics also within the city of Madison city limits. And then through Dean Health Plan, we cover nearly a half-million members across our entire system. The TPB, PTPPB members have already received our policy memo and consideration, so I'll try to briefly summarize, but our main focus with the metro redesign is service on Fish Hatchery Road, as I already mentioned earlier. We operate a clinic, our South Madison Campus Clinic, at 1211 Fish Hatchery Road, which is just south of the corner of Fish Hatchery and Midland Street. And as you all know, through the presentation and other public comments, the current plan eliminates all service on Fish Hatchery Road. We recognize, and we hope the city recognizes, that it's vital to retain public transportation access to health and healthcare-related resources, and that's why we are supporting Amendment 4D and asking you to do the same. As of the drafting of our memo, it was the only amendment that added service back in on Fish Hatchery Road, and that service is consistent and efficient. Moreover, I just want to state that the city, in its establishment of our approval for the construct, the construction of the South Madison Campus Clinic, put conditions on that approval, and one of those conditions was for us to build and maintain a bus pad and shelter just south of our clinic. Obviously, if service is eliminated on Fish Hatchery Road, that pad and shelter will ultimately become useless. So, again, just want to reiterate that we are supporting Amendment 4D, and we're asking the board and members of the city council to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben, you had four seconds to spare. Well done. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, we will move on then to Speaker Adrian Travis. I'll do my best to pronounce folks' names, I apologize if I get something wrong. 6010 South Hill Drive, Madison, neither in support nor opposition, wishing to speak.
Thank you very much, to the, thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks, it's Adrian Travis, and I'm a resident of the area that's between the proposed lines of H like Harold, Y like Yellow, A like Adam, which the MTA plan correctly identified as adversely affected by the proposed changes. Thank you, MTA, for acknowledging that our neighborhood will be adversely affected. I'm, I actually want to commend the MTA for aiming for racial or ethnic equity, but I also want to speak for another marginalized group that's heavily dependent on public transportation, of which I'm a member, and that's individuals with disabilities. So, the adverse effect on my neighborhood is going to entail doubling or tripling walking distance. I have an impairment, it's a visual impairment, I don't drive anymore, so when I cannot bike to campus or downtown, I will be relying on the buses during inclement weather, and I would like to encourage a slowdown of this process to collect more data about commuting patterns post-pandemic, we hope, and during winter and during periods of inclement weather, to make sure that these changes aren't disadvantaging another marginalized group while searching for equity for a very important group that shouldn't be disadvantaged. So, what we're looking for here are those creative compromises. And let me just tell a brief anecdote, that MTA canceled my main bus route, the fourteen bus route, not long ago. I didn't receive notification, but that might have been me, I'm not sure if there were emails sent, and it took a great deal of time to get home that day since the fourteen was canceled, and that's the result of this proposed redesign, eliminating the bus that ran along Regent from Whitney Way to Gammon approximately. And it's going to disservice a large number of residential neighborhoods, many of which may contain individuals with disabilities. So, I would suggest, recommend that a little more data be collected across Madison on the distribution of individuals with disabilities who rely on the bus system, if those data have not yet been collected, or even if they have pre-pandemic. I think we need new information post-pandemic about disability. So, overall, I want to commend MTA for thinking about equity, but I think individuals with disabilities may have been underrepresented in the data collection, and my area in particular is adversely affected by the proposed changes, which probably could be redressed by a north-south line between Old Sock and Mineral Point, or reinstating the east-west line that ran down Regent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrian. Are there any questions for the speaker? Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you very much for speaking this evening. I'm, recently Metro released a survey, and hoped that its audience would be people with disabilities, and I'm just curious, speaking of outreach, whether you saw that and were able to respond to it.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I filled out that survey, and by the way, I've also responded in writing twice to the invitations by MTA about this draft plan. I did fill out that survey, however, you should be aware that Survey Monkey is not fully accessible to the visually impaired, because it doesn't support many common text-to-speech applications, and therefore, it takes two or three times as long to fill out for someone like myself. If you'd like to reach out, I'm the former Chair of the University Committee on Disability Access and Inclusion for the University of Wisconsin and Madison, as you know, many bus lines pass through there. So, we discuss these sorts of issues about digital accessibility, as well as transportation accessibility, all the time, and we have members from, among the students, the staff, and the faculty, so I can connect you to a very diverse group of individuals interested and concerned about disability. Thank you for that question.
Thanks for that answer.
Okay, thank you. Then next up is Deborah Mason, 540 West Olin Avenue, 325 Madison, Wisconsin, 53715, in opposition, wishing to speak. Hi, Deborah, you've got three minutes, you'll begin when you're ready.
Deborah's ill this evening.
All right, thank you. Then we will go to Patrick E. Jackson, 6637 Gettysburg Drive, Madison, Wisconsin, in opposition, wishing to speak. We have a Patrick Jackson.
There's no person in attendance by that name.
Okay, thank you. Margaret, I still see your hand up, did you have a, okay. All right, then we'll go to the next page here. Next up then is Mick Mullie, 5402 Glad Avenue, Madison, neither in support nor opposition, wishing to speak, representing the owner-manager of Maple Glen Apartment Homes in the Salt Dale neighborhood. We have Mick Mullie.
There's no person in attendance by that name.
Okay, thank you. Next up then is Belmi Patricia Meha, in opposition, wishing to speak, at 200 Deer Valley Road, Madison, Wisconsin. We have Belmi.
And there is no person in attendance by that name.
Okay, thank you. Next up then is Laura Green, 1862 Beld Street, Madison, in opposition, wishing to speak. Hi, Laura.
Hello, thank you to the city staff and its consultants, who have put so much time and resources into the Madison Metro redesign. I am the Grants and Communications Coordinator at the Catholic Multicultural Center, a social service agency on Madison's south side, serving over five thousand individuals each year. We have been closely following the redesign process, because many of our guests rely on public transit as their primary or only transportation option. With the currently proposed draft plan presented for your approval this evening, we are one step closer to the harsh reality that our neighborhood, which is Bram's addition and Capital View, will lose bus service. This decision that you hold in your hands will affect the lives of thousands of residents. Taking bus service away from a high concentration of low-income, senior, and disabled individuals who depend on the bus is an unacceptable sacrifice for improving bus service elsewhere. If anything, more resources should be invested into these neighborhoods to ensure that the people who most need this service continue to have easy access to the bus system. Furthermore, so many voices impacted by this decision have been missing from this discussion, because the structures of the redesign process have created significant barriers to receiving input. Because Bram's addition neighborhood is, has a unique layout, most other residents would have a long walk to a bus stop on Park Street. It is a neighborhood comprising of fifteen blocks, but has only four exits to Park Street. For example, a resident living on Baird Street would need to walk a minimum of one-third of a mile just to reach Park Street. Though Amendment 4D staff are proposing to add back some bus service to the South Madison, but our guests and neighbors at the CMC would still lose out. It is very reasonable to request a route that serves all of the key vulnerable populations and service sites in south-central Madison via Fish Hatchery Road, Olin Avenue, and through Bram's addition and Capital View neighborhood. The South Madison Planning Council proposed such a route via Amendment 4E, which was originally dismissed by city staff. Just a slight modification to the currently endorsed 4D, such as in 4E, would achieve the coverage that our neighborhood needs and deserves. We urge you to do what it takes to ensure that our neighbors do not lose bus coverage, and we want the same to be true for all vulnerable neighborhoods in Madison. The vast majority of the people we serve at the CMC lack the time and language, technology, and lobbying skills to speak up at a meeting such as this one. For those who cannot be here to speak up tonight, I speak for the dozens of guests at the CMC who express great concerns to us about the loss of bus coverage. On behalf of the remainder of the CMC staff, I urge you to adopt an amendment that brings back coverage to our neighborhood and other key sites through south-central Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next speaker is Sloan Brown, 1862 Beld Street, Madison, in opposition, wishing to speak. Sloan, go ahead, when you're ready.
Sloan, you are unmuted on our, your, or on our end, you may be muted on your end. There may be a mute button on your headset or on your computer, now you are muted. In Zoom?
Okay, so am I unmuted now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, as far as the overall plan, where you are increasing the frequency of runs, and you are running routes that are pretty much going throughout the whole city, the concentration downtown is a bit much. My biggest concern has to do with the neighborhood areas that the addendums are supposed to address. When I first saw the new setup, and there weren't addendums, and I asked about it, that apparently became the big thing. The problem I'm seeing with some of these addendums coming out now is that you are setting them up to circle the neighborhoods that you're supposed to be serving, and they're running along existing parts of the route you're going to be setting up, which just is redundancy you don't need. You need to be able to run those, those addendums into the neighborhoods and back out to the runs that are supposed to be the higher-frequency runs that are supposed to get people around quicker. So, if you're, all you're doing is circling the neighborhoods along those routes, you aren't helping people at all in those neighborhoods. And that's the biggest thing with this new setup, is if you want it to work overall, you have to be able to get to the people at their homes as well, not right, like right out front the door, but you don't want to be, have to make them walk a third of a mile or more when they didn't have to before. This is supposed to serve the entire city, all of the citizens, not just the ones who have the money and don't actually need it anyway, which is what the main corridor downtown is going to do. So, we need to, we need to have this plan cover the whole city in a reasonable manner. That's pretty much what I, what I'm advocating for here. So, you have your high-speed stuff going on, that's fine. You need these, these, these smaller in-and-out routes that can then get people from their homes to the routes that get things done quicker. If you don't do both, then you're not doing the system right at all in the first place. So, that's my primary advocacy, is, is improve the system with respect to speed as, you know, as much as you can, but don't forget about the people actually having to be able to get to the system to use it, because without that, the rest of the system becomes largely useless. Pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you, Sloan. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none, our next speaker is Kim Owens, 1902 Londonderry Drive, Madison, Wisconsin, in opposition, wishing to speak.
Chair, there is no person in attendance by that name.
Thank you. The next person then is Susan DeVos, 610 North Midvale Boulevard, Madison, in opposition, wishing to speak. Susan, hello, welcome.
My name is Susan DeVos, I'm a senior disabled resident of Madison, and a main-line bus rider who used to have to ride paratrans. I served for years on the now-defunct ADA Transit Subcommittee of the Transit and Parking Machine. To summarize my four points, one, hold off on any decision until there is a more coherent plan. Two, be honest about what the plan delivers. Everyone is aware the current system needs improvement. Three, bring back having a senior or disabled voting member on all transportation oversight bodies. Four, give people a choice as to how to spend their transportation money. Don't decide for them. My main recommendation is that the current pseudo-plan be put on hold and revisited when more coherent. The path coherence would include an equity analysis and a simple overlay of maps of existing and planned service. and a simple overlay of maps of existing and planned service. Why the rush? We are now being asked to comment on a piecemeal, uncoordinated plan. That is not a reasonable use of the public's time or attention. Second, I recommend the redesign plan be honest. Honest about social equity, funding, accessibility, and sustainability. For instance, how honest is it to claim that adding a frequent BRT route from east to west at the expense of existing routes on the north and south improves social equity when the highest, um, concentrations of non-student, low-income, and transit-dependent populations live on the north and south sides? How honest is it to dangle frequency as an option when frequency ends up being defined as every 30 minutes, similar to the current supposedly infrequent service now of every 30 minutes? Third, I recommend bringing back the requirement that a senior or disabled person be a voting member of any transportation oversight committee, especially if the one tasked with approving or...
It's time, Susan, thank you.
...this network system.
Are there any questions for the speaker? Alder Hank, McKinnney, go ahead, please.
Um, Susan, I... uh, you... we cut you off in the middle of your conversation. Um, did you have another statement that you wanted to add?
Go ahead, Susan.
Yes, I did, because I thought I had five minutes. Um, I emphasize that the ADA of 1990 is a civil rights law. Does Madison really want to feign ignorance of this fact? I also recommend that people be given a choice of how to spend their transportation money. Are they really okay with funding the new system at the pre-2019 Wills tax level after approving the added fee under the misguided belief that they would be quoting from the 219 Metro Board wire investing in fast, reliable, and accessible transportation?
Thank you, Chair. I'm complete.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next, uh, registrant is Barbara Bailey, 540 West Olin Avenue, Madison, in opposition wishing to speak. Hello, Barbara.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I was surprised to hear about the, uh, um, five minutes that, uh, I'm advocating for, uh, Option O, uh, uh, 4E. Uh, I was surprised to hear about, um, if we kept in the route that goes around Bram's Addition and Capital View would take an extra five minutes because I've noticed, and I take the 13 a lot, that the 13 often gets to the south transfer point early. And also, uh, with the current detour away from Celery Hall and coming up, uh, I think it's Brooks, and then over on, uh, West Johnson, uh, has also made it navigate that intersection a lot quicker. Makes it easier to catch, uh, let's say, number two going west. So I, um, I'm not so sure that, uh, keeping, uh, the routes running through Capital View and Bram's Addition, uh, is going to take an whole extra five minutes. I feel like, uh, people in Bram's Addition and Capital View are being asked to sacrifice and walk longer and further so that we can have BART. I filled out the survey before I knew about the redesign, and, um, if I had known, uh, about the redesign when I filled out the survey, I would have filled it out differently. I think that, uh, we should be able to keep Bram's and Capital View and still be on time. That's it.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Carrie Rothberg, 830 West Lakeside Street, Madison, in opposition wishing to speak.
Oh. Thanks. Yeah, I'm expressing the same thanks as everybody else for this opportunity to speak. When I left home at 2:30 today, the letters from the community intended for this body and for Metro were not yet up on Legista, and I have to wonder what that means and how many members of the public were discouraged by that, whether the members of TPPB have had the chance to read any of them. I did, I skimmed them, and they do make the point over and over again, by and large, that people are making tonight. I'm in South Madison, and here in South Madison, we felt so strongly about local bus access on the south side that we called a meeting on 516 to present our proposed solution 4E. Oppose 4D, which, as envisioned by transit planners, as one letter writer put it, pitted our neighborhoods against each other. We don't want to pit ourselves against each other. We work together as a south side, and we feel that the only option is 4E. Despite this, we were told at the meeting that 4E was not an option when it later appeared among the other amended routes, as someone pointed out. It was too late for many people to change their vote for 4E. Many people still don't even know that 4E exists. The second point that I saw made over and over again in the letters that we've talked about here on the south side is that the ridership model works very well for the redesign of both the existing transit routes, um, and for elimination of routes in order to support the BRT along the east-west corridor. But coverage is needed in what the city itself talks about in its metro materials as the peripheral communities of color, those who are dependent on bus service. And yet, this plan, as it now stands, would make the many in these communities face walks who exceed the stated new system average walk of a quarter of a mile. We've counted walks of as much as a mile in places, and certainly many half-mile walks, which might be nothing for an able-bodied person, but become something for someone who isn't as able-bodied as, um, younger people or who feels compromised by walking on ice in winter. Um, this plan works against the benefit of the people for whom public transit is not an option but a requirement. The ridership model contradicts the city's own stated goal of increasing equity. Instead, people in these communities stand to lose easy access to bus routes. To, I mean, the, the major routes, what may someday become a bus route.
That's time. That's time, Carrie, thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Oh, I do have one. Never mind, that's an empty. Um, okay. Our next speaker then, our next registrant, is, uh, Kirsten Huslman, uh, 2426 Equity Lane in Pittsburgh, neither support nor opposition wishing to speak. Kirsten, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten Huslman. I live in the Ally Drive, Dunn's Marsh neighborhood, and was recently elected to represent District 27, which covers the northern part of Pittsburgh on the Dane County Board of Supervisors. The changes in metro redesign disproportionately affects historically disenfranchised and highly bus-dependent areas of the Madison Metro area and Dane County District 27. I, and many of the communities I now represent, feel that the decisions being made in this redesign of bus routes have lacked important community outreach and engagement of those most impacted by these changes. Public transit is a vital public service. We should be making it more accessible to address environmental, economic, racial disability, housing, and other injustices experienced by far too many of our neighbors, not making it less equitable, which is the ultimate impact of this redesign so far. Although none of these proposed amendments are 100% ideal for the affected Pittsburgh communities, I do support the following proposed amendment: Amendment 16C, which would mean more access within the neighborhood of the Saltail neighborhood, um, in which the neighborhood themselves advocated for and was approved by the Pittsburgh Common Council; Amendment 13, which provides stops on Genuine and Red Arrow in the Ally Drive, Dunn's Marsh neighborhood; Amendment 17A, which would add stops to the Drive Versa neighborhood that was supported by the Pittsburgh Common Council as well; and Amendment 14, which would provide services to the Pittsburgh Senior Center and other Pittsburgh city buildings, an important service for the area's aging community that was not supported in the Pittsburgh Common Council. I urge you to listen to these communities, prioritize impact and equity over intent, and do better to represent those most impacted by these decisions. Thank you for your time and consideration on these matters.
Thank you, Kirsten. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Gloria Reese, 4002 Tom Scott Trail, Madison, Wisconsin, in opposition wishing to speak. Hello, Gloria, welcome.
Hello. Hi, thank you. Thank you for your time. Um, I'm calling, uh, to speak in opposition. I'm very concerned about, uh, the rollout, um, of the bus rapid redesign. Um, I think there's a lot of equity issues. Um, I am the CEO of Briar Patch U Services. Um, it came to my attention that, um, the bus stop that is currently located across the street from Briar Patch is no longer going to exist. Um, and this is when I started to, um, look into, uh, this, this process and the impact that this redesign is going to...
Well, it looks like we lost connection. Here's Gloria.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm sorry about that. I don't know what... You know, as the Briar Patch CEO, I learned that, um, the bus stop across the street was no longer going to exist with this redesign. And, um, and then as I started looking to it more, I mean, there's a clear equity issue with this process. Um, Briar Patch serves our most vulnerable youth, um, in the city of Madison. And we, um, we went to a community meeting a couple weeks ago, and it was, it was so sad to see our Latino families, our Black families, who were in this space trying to figure out how this was going to impact them. It was obvious to me that they have not been part of this process of engagement. We, um, this is going to impact how to get, how they get to work. Um, and i- i- if anybody was there would have seen just how sad this was and how I question if this is the Madison that I currently live in. I mean, we talk about equity, 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 um, in everything that we do, but when it really, when rubber meets the road, it seems like we miss the mark. This is impacting our most vulnerable populations, and we're doing this process backwards. We should have done a racial equity, an equity analysis to begin with. Anytime we changed a policy, uh, when I served as deputy mayor, we ensured that an equity analysis was conducted, um, before we made any policy changes. I keep asking the question, where is this racial or this equity analysis? How is this, um, policy change going to impact and have unintended consequences for our most vulnerable populations? Our Black, Latino, our dis... disabled, uh, community? Um, those are the questions we should be asking with this process. So when we talk about how we're trying to limit the time to get to work, um, you know, uh, for people, and how we throw out the word equity, but then at the end, it really is not. And, and for who, right? Who is this, um, rapid redesign for? Um, and that's the question I have.
Sorry, Gloria, that is time. Um, are there any questions for the speaker?
Okay, thank you.
Alder Hank, McKinnney, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, Gloria, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Um, tell me, how many, um, students, uh, does Briar Patch serve on a... Can you give me a, like, a daily basis or an annual basis and idea of the impact of removing that stop from in front of Briar Patch?
It, it varies. Um, I would have to say about 3,000, um, a year. Um, and, but it varies. Um, and we also have families who use the bus, parents who come to Briar Patch. Um, and so I would say on a typical week, we're seeing kids coming and going from school, uh, you know, 10, um, and, you know, and parents, along with parents, it's just, um... Yeah, so it's going to have a significant impact on our children.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have evening activities there as well? You mentioned coming to and from school. Do you have evening activities that would be impacted as well?
Yes, we do have evening activities.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Randy, go ahead, please.
Yes, Gloria? Yeah, you're still there, correct? Hi.
Yes, I am.
Randy, you don't. Uh, the, the amendment that we, City Council picked for pass last week, uh, 16C, that should correct what you're referencing, correct? As far as, uh, passing, um, your facility, Briar Patch?
It's not gonna, from my understanding, it's not gonna stop. It's gonna, it's gonna change. The bus stop is gonna change. It's not gonna...
Instead of in the front, it's probably gonna be the rear of the invasion or in that direction, correct? I, I, I'm just, I just want to point out that I believe that we care for the issue, so, uh, I just wanted, wanted your buy-in.
I thought, I thought it was gonna change, but it was gonna be like three blocks away.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Randy. Uh, Justin, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to add, yes, the, um, the 16C would bring service down Innovation Parkway just behind Briar Patch, so we would anticipate adding a stop there. That would be basically equitized into the current stop.
Thank you, Justin. All right, our next speaker, um, is Masaru Oka, 301 South Yellowstone Drive, apartment 115, Madison. Um, neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak. We have, uh, the, um, here we go.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Uh, so my name is Masaru Oka. Uh, I have lived here in Madison for about 11 years without a car. Uh, just to be clear, I am not part of any disadvantaged groups. Uh, I am one of those people who chooses to ride the bus, and I certainly could buy a... I am one of those people who chooses to ride the bus and I certainly could buy a car, but I've chosen not to. And so I think I'm kind of a slightly different constituent than most of the other people who have spoken so far. But for me, using the bus has been an important part of my identity and. Bus access has been very important in choosing where I live. So I've chosen apartments that are very close to a bus line so that I can get to work easily. But I did live at one house where I had to bike a mile just to get to the bus to get to work. And most people, if they were facing that choice, they would just buy a car. And so with this redesign, I know because of some of our constraints. There are going to be people who are farther from a bus stop. And even if the total trip time is shorter. If it takes too long to get to the bus stop, they're not going to continue using it. So that last mile, I think, is an issue that we do need to address. And honestly, the way that I think we have to do that is by removing that constraint on how much money we spend on metro. Transportation is something that's very important to the city, not just for bus riders, but also drivers. And if we can spend more money on the bus system, we can add more coverage, we can. Help these people who are dependent on the bus. I did see in some of the analysis that there are a number of, I think, housing. Facilities on the west side. Where there are higher concentrations of people dependent on the bus. And I saw quite a few of those which are going to be significantly farther from a bus stop. I don't know if the amendments help with those. Personally, I do support Amendment Six A. Which will add service back to the old sock area. I did see quite a few people complaining about. The buses being taken away in the original redesign on Nextdoor, so I'm glad about that. And I am also a little concerned about the equity analysis. Although it showed that it was pretty even. The low income part included UW students who aren't really, I think. A community that we need to be as concerned about because the people who live downtown are already served by many bus routes. So if we can take out university students from that equity analysis, I think we'd get a better picture of. How that's impacting low income populations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none, our next speaker is Josh Jenkins, two six zero nine County Rose Court, Madison, in opposition wishing to speak. Hello Josh, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead when you're ready.
All right. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Have emailed pretty extensive comments about. You know what the neighborhood of Southdale faces, which. You know, was made clear in the city of Pittsburgh last week and glad to see that there are people here who can speak to that. Specifically want to talk about, again, the. The equity analysis, including university students and its determination that. Low income people are going to see longer walk. Through the bus, but be in closer proximity to high frequency of buses. And I'll, I'll be honest, this feels like a sleight of hand to cover. What really seems like. Both an equity analysis and real meaningful outreach to low income communities has been. Just nonexistent. And to give one anecdote here in. In the Southdale neighborhood, you know, we're in the town of Madison, which held zero public meetings. Metro held zero public meetings. Our service is in one of two neighborhoods that has the highest. Percentage of people of color in the service area. And sixteen stops serving close to a thousand people a week. And the draft plan proposes to cut all of that. And make the walking distance about ten blocks to get to that stop. So. I support Amendment sixteen C. It's a new amendment this week. It's the only one that conserves service to our neighborhood. Just to be clear that that's the amendment that we're pushing for. We also support four E. In Bram's addition and Amendment thirteen. In the Ally Drive neighborhood. Also move to reevaluate Route O on the north side, which isn't going to serve. The Northport residents any better than previous amendments. But, you know, specifically the outreach has been heavily English only tonight. The interpretation is. Possibly acceptable, although we're not hearing it in general. I can tell you that a lot of our neighbors, about half of the people that have shown up to testify in past meetings have been Spanish speakers. You called some of their names tonight, but I do not blame people for not being able to get to this meeting. Not feeling like they're going to be heard and not feeling like interpretation services are going to be adequate. The outreach in this neighborhood has been terrible. Like I referenced, town of Madison held no meetings. Only when neighbors showed up at a meeting about the Pittsburgh annexation. Pretty upset about bus service being cut, did Metro schedule a public appearance in Southdale. They noticed the meeting on May ninth and the meeting was May eleventh and that was the first time we've had a chance to weigh in about our service. So this whole plan, the outreach to low income neighborhoods. The equity analysis that lumps in generationally impoverished families with. College students downtown, all of these issues are. Something that really should stop this redesign in its tracks. Like previous speakers Gloria Rees mentioned, that kind of equity analysis needed to be undertaken at the very beginning. So this plan appears to be kind of a sleight of hand to sidestep. The outcry that's rightfully going to come from low income neighborhoods that are going to see their service cut if the original draft plan is approved. The amendments that I mentioned sixteen.
Josh, that's time, thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Jay Allen, one five zero two Greenway Crossing. Madison, Wisconsin, in support wishing to speak. Hello Jay, welcome.
Jay, you may, should be saying, there you go.
There we go.
All right, found it, sorry about that. I'm actually driving back to town right now, so I apologize. I'm Jay Allen. I'm a member of the Pittsburgh City Council and last week. Our city council voted unanimously in favor of Amendment sixteen C. Unfortunately, I agree with many of the points Josh just made about the outreach being inadequate for this neighborhood. And honestly, Pittsburgh was unaware of some of the issues going on until about a month and a half ago. So in that time, we've done everything we can to try to. Understand the needs of the neighborhood, the way, the situation, the way it's been and how these changes are going to affect them. There's a number of people I've learned in this neighborhood among. Yes, there's a lot of Spanish speaking people who are having trouble attending the meetings because the. Translation services have been inadequate. But we've also had a lot of disabled people speak up and talk about the difficulty in trying to walk. You know, and trying to just move more than four or five blocks to a bus stop. So Pittsburgh has said that we are willing to pay for this. It's going to add a couple of minutes to the length of Route sixteen. But we're willing to pay for it. Because it's important to our residents to have that service. So as this continues to move through the process, I would just ask that you would support Amendment sixteen C so that we can. Work toward getting better service for the residents in our neighborhoods. Thanks.
All right, thank you Jay. Are there any questions for the speaker? Being none, our next registrant is Gabriella Gerhart. Sixty-four Woodbrook Way, Pittsburgh, neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Gabriella Gerhart. I am an alder in the city of Pittsburgh. I also sit on the Transportation and Transit Committee in Pittsburgh, so I've been following this process from the outset. I'm here today to support of the Pittsburgh amendments that were passed last week. There were four different amendments. You've heard a couple of people talk about sixteen C. That is absolutely vital and it's a new route through Southdale that we created last week in collaboration with Madison Metro. The other one that is absolutely key is Amendment thirteen, which brings Route D two into the Belmar Ally Drive neighborhood. That is absolutely essential as well. And then two other ones that we support are Amendment fifteen, which brings Route Z halfway to the UW campus. And then also Amendment seventeen A, which brings Route Z into the Taravase neighborhood. You know, these are the amendments I hope you'll support to make the system better. I would like to say though that I have a lot of concerns. I'm going to mirror a lot of what people have said. I followed this process from the beginning. But I do think that. There were a lot of people that were left out just by the virtue of the fact that it happened during the pandemic. People, there are a lot of people that I've spoken with on the phone that do not have internet access. And that didn't have access to it, especially during the pandemic because of the limitation. Because of, because of the virus. So there were a lot of people that were left out of the, out of perfect mindset. And then now that the draft map has been released, that's when people really understand the impact and then. But we're always working to adjust that imperfect draft map. So. It's, there are people that are really thinking and rightfully so. And so I hope that these amendments pass. You know, there's a lot of great ones through the individual neighborhoods. But I do wonder how many people haven't had a chance to weigh in on a draft amendment because they didn't even know that this is happening. They may not really realize what this means. So assuming that this passes and that there's no way to stop the process. I think we need to be really intentional about outreach once it's final. And be really specific with people that these bus stops are going away. Here's how to learn how the system works so that you can navigate it because people are going to have to make housing decisions. I mean, it is already impossible to find affordable housing in Dane County. And people are already strapped because of the pandemic. I'm very concerned about the impact, but I think we need to be really, really. Really intentional about providing people with services and being clear about what the reality is. Assuming that this passes, assuming that this cannot be slowed down in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you Gabriella. Are there any questions for our speaker? All right, seeing none, our next registrant is Denise Jess. Eight two nine Jennifer Street, Madison, neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak. Representing the Wisconsin Council of the Blind and Visually Impaired. Denise?
Yep, I am here. Good evening Chair and members of the board. Thanks so much for this opportunity to talk with you tonight. I want to first commend these efforts to establish more equity in our public transportation system. And as I'm doing that, also want to note the challenges of doing equitable equity analysis. Regarding people with disabilities. So as we've heard tonight from some of the other speakers. Folks with disabilities, myself included, live throughout the city of Madison. And a lot of the equity data is dependent on self-reporting and having the opportunity to even self-report. And the reality is that any one of us at any time can become a person with disability. So. The metro redesign has significant impact for people with disabilities. Some will. Be advantaged by the route changes and some will be disadvantaged. And so the couple of concerns that I wanted to raise. That have come to my attention from our constituents as I speak with them. First of all, the folks that have a longer travel distance to a bus stop. Are very fearful that this will push them into needing to use para-transit. Para-transit, while it is there as a supplement for people with disabilities who cannot use fixed route systems. The para-transit in the city of Madison is under, it really needs to be scrutinized, reevaluated. And looked at because it is not a functional system for folks who need to get to work on time, who need to be at doctor's appointments on time. And folks are often very fearful that they will lose their employment because of using para-transit. So do whatever they can to avoid it. The other thing that folks have voiced is with longer walking distances. Needing to do more street crossings. Street crossings for those of us with disabilities, whether it's vision or we're using mobility devices. Is one of the most dangerous day-to-day activities that we experience. So. My invitation is to really look at how are we measuring equity when it comes to the needs of people with disabilities? I haven't seen the results of the questionnaire. I appreciate that that questionnaire went out. But I haven't seen any results from it, so I'd be really interested to know what, how folks responded to that. And how are we really measuring equity for people with disabilities? And then assuming that this passes, we have to do some pretty serious infrastructure. And evaluation of our para-transit system, making sure that we have walkable, accessible street crossings. On our walk routes to the bus stops. And we also really need to invest in travel training so that people can learn the new system. So. That is it for me this evening. And again, thank you so much for this opportunity and thanks for all the work that has gone into this effort thus far.
Thank you Denise. Any questions for the speaker? Being none, our next registrant is John Beeman. Five four zero West Olin Avenue, Madison, Wisconsin, neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak.
Chair, there's no person in attendance by that name.
Okay, thank you. Our next registrant is Royce Williams. Two two zero six West Lawn Avenue, Madison, neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak. Hello Royce, welcome.
Thank you. I put down that I. Do not support or. Or in favor of the current system because I don't think we have enough information. To make that determination. And I think we need to do. Three things. One is we need to come up with a final plan. I think Mike said there were something like seventeen amendments. You guys need to decide which amendments are coming in and which ones are going out. So we come up with a final plan. And. And then. We're looking ahead to the orders. Having to approve this plan. Unfortunately, they're giving, the orders almost no time to do that. Because I think that. The design team needs to. Go back to the. 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 Ride guide in August. Twenty nineteen. And write down. How people are going to be. Migrate different route in the new system. Because it is quite a struggle for. An older person like me to tell. What the new route equivalent is going to be to the one. For an old route. And I'll give you an example. I live off Monroe Street and actually Monroe Street is. Doing fairly well on this. But we take the bus downtown all the time. And it's unclear from the map. And it's unclear from the maps. It's what we're going to do with the BRT. We are going to have to transfer to the BRT to complete the seven, the equivalent of the seven route. And there are a number of routes that run, old routes that run through the University Avenue corner. And I'm very unclear as to how they're going to be handled. And so what I'm suggesting is we need to go through with the older routes and and actually indicate how they're going to be handled on the new system. These routes, the old routes were put together over the years and they have all kinds of repignment. It's very difficult for computer models to plug all these things in to come up with a new plan.
Sorry Royce, but that, that's time. Do we have any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Rebecca Sauberman, 1033 High Street, Madison, Wisconsin. Wishing to speak.
Chair, there's no person in attendance by that name.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brian Gearing, 902 Cutkey Drive, Madison, Wisconsin. In opposition wishing to speak. Hello Brian, welcome.
Hello.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I am opposition of this. I think we don't have enough information. One thing that greatly concerns me is there is no longer any bus service to the malls. You have to walk across the mall parking lot. I mean, if you're disabled or in a wheelchair, you know, the parking lot gets icy and stuff. Then what are you going to do? The other thing is that I, I, I agree about the transfer point taking too much time. But I don't know if this redesign is the way to go about it. I have missed my bus at the West Transfer Point. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you Brian. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Caitlin Unis, 2609 County Roseport, Madison. In opposition wishing to speak.
Yeah, hi. My name is Caitlin Unis and I'm a resident of the Southdale neighborhood. And I'm mostly here to urge you to support Amendment 16C, the one that most impacts my neighborhood, but also here in support of Amendment 4E and Amendment 13. As you probably already know, the Southdale neighborhood is a fairly isolated, if not highly isolated neighborhood and is home to predominantly low-income and black and brown adults and families. All of our kids in our neighborhood, elementary through high school, take at least a 30-minute bus ride to get to school each day because we don't have a neighborhood public school. So even if you maintain our stops for the dedicated school bus routes, this redesign will impact youth who are starting school late and those who attend extracurricular activities and school events after hours. Those who depend on the bus, and it is many of us in this neighborhood, use it to go grocery shopping because there's no neighborhood grocery store, to get to work, to go to the laundromat, to go virtually anywhere else that they would need to go. Despite 15 years of development in our neighborhood, very little development in this neighborhood is actually for this neighborhood. So almost all of our needs require us to go to other parts of town. So I think one of the things that this redesign assumes is that an accessible walk for residents to get to a bus stop is actually fundamentally inaccessible to people with disabilities, to families moving around with young kids, to elders, people carrying bags of groceries or laundry, anyone who feels unsafe walking alone at night along poorly lit streets with little to no other activity on them. I think to further demobilize the residents of the Southdale neighborhood and any of the other low-income neighborhoods that are losing coverage is hugely unjust. So I urge you to support Amendment 16C and continue the basic service that we all in this neighborhood rely on. I also urge you to pause the process for the redesign until you can find effective ways to gather and honor the feedback of Madison and Pittsburgh's most impacted communities. That's all I wanted to share, but I know my daughter Amina also registered to speak, but she would be speaking on my Zoom, so I just wanted to share that as well in case she's up next. Thank you.
Thank you Caitlin. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Amina Unis, 2609 County Roseport, Madison, Wisconsin. In opposition wishing to speak. As we just heard from Caitlin, likely using the same Zoom account.
Hi. Hi, my name is Amina Unis and I live in Southdale neighborhood. And we do not have any grocery stores, no schools, no laundromats. So many people in my neighborhood need to ride the bus, to go on walks and just to get out of the house. Why do you think about taking the bus service away? Please do not take the bus service.
Thank you Amina. Do we have any questions for the registrant? All right, seeing none. Our next registrant is Barbara Smith, 456 North View Street, Madison. Neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak.
Good, good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. The, a large employer is the state of Wisconsin who has a lot of employees in, especially in some concentrated areas. And it's really hard to say how things will be once we quote "get back to normal" because right now the state of Wisconsin has allowed a great deal of remote work. And so I think I'm, I'm concerned about a redesign in the middle of this uncertain period because right now a lot of these big state office buildings are not fully utilized. And I can't believe that's going to be the long-term plan. So state employees would be a really key rider group to add stability to the system. I heard secondhand within the past couple of weeks that the, the state of Wisconsin hasn't really talked about offering the type of employer subsidized bus passes that city and county employees have and, and that has helped drive a lot of transit ridership. So anyway, I think that there's a lot more potential to, anyway, to get state employees riding and we won't know exactly how to do that because the current situation is not really the long-term situation. Let's see. I work on the, off the Capitol Square, a few blocks off the Capitol Square. So I'm alarmed at the few buses that would be serving the Capitol Square. I think I've lived without a car for many years and so I'm a heavy bus user. And I, I do think that there's a strong argument for keeping some of the, not cutting as much of the service. So I would like to see more funding come in so that these types of cuts are not necessary. One I noticed, another one is the Amendment 10 Route E that would bypass the UW Hospital. So I don't know if I misunderstood that, but I don't think a bus that stops on University Avenue is as good, you know, if you're having to go to the hospital because then that increases the hike that you have to make in order to get to the hospital. It's quite a, quite a little adventure. And you know, some of those people are sick because they're going to the hospital. So glad that you proposed restoring some peak service to Sherman Harris and also some service to Pick and Save. But I guess my main contribution is to say, you know, the Capitol Square is, is a, you know, this, this, we want long-term stability for the system. So we really want a lot of riders of the type that used to be downtown office workers or that type of people who could ride day after day and be part of a great network system. So I hope that that can be reexamined. Thank you.
Thank you Barbara. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Yvonne Twinge, 115 South Franklin, Madison, Wisconsin. Neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name's Yvonne Schwinger. I'm a dependent bus rider and I do not drive. I've been using the Madison bus system for 20 years. I'm very concerned with the proposed network redesign as the funding is insufficient for maintaining adequate service. The large resources needed for operating the BRT are negatively impacting the rest of the network. I do not think the network redesign should be approved until adequate funding is secured. If additional funding is not possible, resources should be reallocated from the BRT to the rest of the system so areas that currently have service will continue to have access to public transportation. All the staff recommended amendments are necessary as without them, many areas of Madison that currently have service will have it removed. I was surprised to learn recently that one of the proposed funding methods for the amendments is to reduce evening and weekend service. For years, riders have been asking for an increase in evening and weekend service. The evening and weekend service is a crucial part of the system that serves all riders, not just commuters with a weekday nine-to-five job in one of the larger employment centers. Although the BRT will provide more frequent and perhaps faster service, it is not helpful if the beginning and end of a rider's trip is not on the same BRT line as transfers will be necessary and longer walks may be required. If the needed transfer is to a bus that only operates one time per hour, in effect, the passenger has hourly service. It doesn't matter if the BRT runs every 15 minutes, if a rider has the time to arrival to a transfer to an only hourly bus. Neighborhood routes and the routes in the amendment should have a frequency of at least 30 minutes to make the frequency of the BRT effective. In particular, I support Amendment 6A. Part of this amendment includes Route R, which follows the path of the currently very heavily used Route 15. It provides 30-minute service during peak times, hourly during the midday and evening, and the Route 68 provides access to this area on weekends. The proposed amendment only provides hourly service and only until 8:00 PM with no service on weekends. The significant reduction in service is similar to many of the other amendments. I am also not sure why in Amendment 6A, this route is included with Route Y as that route requires funding from Middleton. At what point will funding from metro partners such as Middleton, Pittsburgh, Manona, Sun Prairie be secured? Will this affect which amendments get approved? If there will be an impact, I think Route R should be separated into an individual amendment. I appreciate all the time and work that has gone into the network redesign. However, I would like to remind the decision-makers that every change, especially elimination of current service areas and reduction of hours directly impacts riders, especially riders like me that are dependent. If the bus doesn't go there, I can't get there. If additional funding is not available to restore adequate service to areas proposed for elimination or reduction, then a rebalancing of coverage and frequency needs to happen. Riders in all area of town will be unfairly impacted if resources are not better balanced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Yvonne. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Gregory Evenson, 217 Deer Valley Road, Madison. In opposition wishing to speak. Hello Gregory, welcome.
Thank you. I was interested, I was fond that a lot of the numbers initially presented interesting that it almost seems like the way you intend to improve some of your numbers in terms of black and brown people having to transfer to improve the numbers by simply eliminating those routes and therefore taking them out of the equation altogether. I live on Deer Valley Road. My wife is handicapped and she cannot even think about trying to reach some of the proposed bus stops. I'm, I'm very glad that Jay Allen spoke and that Pittsburgh seems to be very forward-thinking about the buses. We, you know, we have over 800 families that live in my neighborhood. And to simply eliminate bus service to all of those families in the interests of this rapid transit, which doesn't seem that it's serving, certainly not serving the low-income neighborhoods in Madison. I don't know how we can avoid that conclusion when we see the plans that are just eliminating all of these neighborhoods. It's, it's just unconscionable. So I hope you will reconsider the routes that run on Deer Valley Road for, for us, please. Because this, the plan, the way it sits now is just, it's not serving the people. And I will thank you for your time.
Thank you Gregory. Any questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none, our next registrant is Patrick Fox, 540 West Olin Avenue, Madison. Neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak.
Chair, I believe that Patrick Fox is at the streaming. So is this Patrick?
It's actually John Beeman.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, in principle, I support the redesign and the BRT. But there does, obviously many equity issues have been brought up and those have been eloquently expressed by others, so I won't go into detail there. I do want to make sure, it appears from the amendments that Route O is going to be a part of the redesign. And I just want to, can that be confirmed for me? The Route O is in fact going, going to be a part of the redesign? Because I'm a, I am a resident of Ramus Apartments and I'm a senior. Many of our fellow, my fellow residents are seniors and a fair number, I think, are physically challenged in one way or another. And we really need to have something that can take us down from where we are to Park Street so that we can access the rest of the city. I don't own a car. I think many of my fellow residents don't own a car. And I don't want to. I support mass transit and I want to use mass transit. As for the alternative, I would support 4E because it covers all, all the neighborhoods of South Madison. And since it only ends at most five minutes, that seems very little to worry about. So I would support 4E. I guess those are the major points I want to make and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Matt Preter, 2906 Stevens Street, Madison, Wisconsin. Support wishing to speak.
Am I on?
Yes, you are Matt. Welcome.
Great. Thanks y'all for this opportunity to be here. So I'm a resident of the Sunset Village neighborhood. I got to be honest, my comments aren't as profound as a lot of the others. I really just have one simple ask and a, and a slight change to an amendment, if it's still possible at this point. And I got to say, it's a change that at, at face value seems, seems pretty straightforward. So the amendment that I'm here to talk about adjustment to is Amendment 10 for Route E, in which I'm, I'm really looking at a two-block route adjustment here. So the current draft plan for Route E shifts what's the current routing of Route 8 from Franklin, Franklin Avenue to Ridge Street. And what I would ask is that if Amendment 5 passes and Amendment 10 is coming up for recommendation, that the board just take a second look at recommendation, that the board just take a second look at that routing of E and move it back from Frank, or from Ridge Street to Franklin Avenue. So the main reason for this is just the infrastructure on Ridge, on Ridge Street needs really significant upgrades and it's not exactly untrafficked as it is, especially for pedestrians. So every morning when I go to work, I see kids wait in the street during rush hours for their school bus pickup. And Ridge is really the main entry point for near west side residents who are walking over to the Shorewood Pool and Crossing University Ave there. But with, with the infrastructure, Ridge Street doesn't even have sidewalks, doesn't even have curb and gutter, which means that all pedestrians walking down those blocks right now need to walk into the street. So previously, it was sort of indicated by staff in public involvement meetings that Ridge was the necessary routing in order for Route E to make that westbound, sorry, eastbound left turn into the UW hospital loop. But if this amendment passes without the E making that turn, I would just again ask that we, we look at that alignment and the way that that lines up to move it back to Franklin where there's already pedestrian infrastructure in place. So I realize it's just, you know, a short little three-block connection for this route, but it seems possible to change from a street with a complete lack of pedestrian infrastructure and maintain those current Route 8 stops for the Route E while still allowing that Route E to overlap the BRT stops where it stops there on Highland and, or on Ubay Drive specifically. I just want to say, so as a newer resident to this neighborhood, it also honestly seems a little wild to me that any neighborhood so close to downtown just doesn't have sidewalks. But that's the decision of other committees, other departments to address. And so in the meantime, I do have to say, it also seems a little wild to me that we would route buses down streets without sidewalks this close to downtown, especially when there's no improvements or restructure of the street plan and when there's an existing sort of feasible route just a block or two away. So again, I don't know if it's, if it's in the game plan at this time, impossible to make amendments to the amendments, but I would encourage that small adjustment to Amendment 10 to prioritize, continue to prioritize safe pedestrian access to the route. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Matt. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Kevin Pomeroy, 4129 Euclid Drive, Madison, in support wishing to speak. Hello, Kevin. Welcome.
Many thanks for hosting the public hearing. I'm the president of the Crawford Marlboro Nakoma Neighborhood Association, which was formed in 2016 to bring three neighborhoods together and complete the city's neighborhood association's map. Transit has been a primary focus of our organization during the pandemic. The neighborhood strongly supports Amendment 7 to the draft plan. The law, the loss of Route 19 at the beginning of the pandemic was a huge problem since many new and long-term residents rode the bus to work and school and moved here for that transit access. In response to the loss of neighborhood transit during the pandemic, our neighborhood association hosted focus groups, community meetings, and Zoom meetup. We were very disappointed with the 2021 ridership and coverage draft alternative transit networks as both removed service from Nakoma Road as did the draft plan. The draft plan indicates about half of the Crawford Marlboro Nakoma neighborhoods will be considerably further from service than we were with the former Route 19. The increase in distance from bus service is about three-eighths of a mile to over a half a mile with the draft plan. Seniors and riders with disabilities in our neighborhoods will have great difficulty with the longer walks to bus service. Add inclement weather to the mix and it's really a formula for reduced ridership and not the increased ridership that is anticipated with the draft plan. We know that the draft plan is constricted as it is, you know, considering it's based on current funding levels, although in the future, the city needs to allocate more funding for improved bus service for all residents, as, as many people have said this evening. As part of the plan, we need to improve connectivity between bike routes, bus routes, and bus stops, you know, with additional bike racks, e-cycle, and pedestrian amenities. So Amendment 7 moves Route D2 from Odana and Midvale to Nakoma. This change replaces part of the service area that was covered by, by Route 19 prior to the pandemic. We are pleased that, that the staff recommends Amendment 7 and the neighborhood and the Crawford Marlboro Nakoma Neighborhood Association strongly supports this change to the draft plan. We thank the staff and consultants for the public participation that was held during, during this process and, and the careful consideration of neighborhood input. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, our next registrant is Cassandra Steiner, 2011 Atwood Avenue, Madison, Wisconsin. Neither in support nor opposition wishing to speak.
Hi, thank you so much. Public transportation is really important to me as a public transit rider myself. My husband and I share one vehicle between the two of us and so for commuting to the office as well as getting around if one of us has, has plans, transit's really essential for us. And then professionally, I also work with transit advocates and so the stories that we're hearing tonight are unfortunately not new to me and probably aren't, aren't new to many of you. So I hope that you heed them moving forward. I live on Atwood Avenue and so my neighborhood is really well-served. That's part of why I chose to live here. And in the redesign, we will continue to be well-served, if not better served. And that's a concern when the north and south sides and parts of the west side are going to be worse off under this plan. It's really well-known that changes to our transit system are necessary. There are a lot of good ideas behind this plan, so increasing access to jobs and using that as a metric of success, simplifying routes so that they're easier to understand for riders, especially new riders or people from other cities in Wisconsin that don't have transit systems. Bus rapid transit and increased frequency are also good things, but there are a lot of things that miss the mark in this plan. There are really serious coverage concerns, which have been covered throughout the night, especially with inclement weather in Wisconsin and the large number of elderly people who fall due to ice. Increasing distances to walk to bus stops is a concern for aging populations, people with disabilities, and also young, right, young people and anyone, right? We're all pedestrians if we're riding transit and so pedestrian safety needs to be better integrated into the plan. I'd also like to see an analysis of how this plan impacts people of color and low-income neighborhoods with campus data removed because peripheral neighborhoods versus the downtown campus are going to have need, different needs. The other thing is that, living at the Atwood neighborhood, I was really excited to see Amendment 3B, which connects Aberg to the Pick and Save. However, I was sad to see that the cross over East Washington was eliminated. I think something that transit has the opportunity to do is increase integration of our neighborhoods. And right now, East Washington is a major barrier for people to get from one side of the city to the other. So that cross across East Washington, I, I would love to see put back in with connection to Aberg, via Aberg to the Pick and Save. I think a lot of the amendments spoken about tonight are really important. I also hope to see this committee and staff work with, with STAT on the Beltline Plan and better integrate transit, walking, and biking with that planning process so that people who live outside of the Beltline are better connected via our transit system. And then, of course, this is the best of a bad financial situation, or maybe not even the best. This is making something of a tough financial situation. And so I hope that we can be honest that this is a vision of what the system has to do to stay afloat and I hope that in the future, better funding can allow us to have the transit system that we all need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right. Seeing none, our next registrant is Josh Jenkins, 2609 County Rose Fort, Madison, Wisconsin.
Chair, Josh has already spoke earlier.
Thank you. Yeah, that one did look familiar. All right. The next registrant then is Nola Walker, 2026 Ardmore Drive, Madison, in opposition wishing to speak.
Chair, that person was just in attendance seconds ago, but has now fallen off the attendance list.
Good eye out. Our next registrant is Alina Holzkova, 337 West Mifflin Street, Madison, Wisconsin. In opposition, not wishing to speak but available to answer questions, representing Red Square Flowers and many State Street businesses. Are there any questions for Alina? Seeing none, our next registrant is Joe Frost, 501 Whitehall Drive, Madison. Neither in support nor opposition, not wishing to speak, available to answer questions. Are there any questions for Joe? Seeing none, our next registrant is Michael Goodman, 21 Maplewood Lane, Madison, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Cynthia McCallum, 705 South Shore Drive, Madison, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Harry Richardson, 456 North View Street, Madison, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Heather Wenger, 907 Chapel Hill Road, Madison, in opposition, not wishing to speak.
Chair, sorry to interrupt. It looks like you haven't refreshed. So we have a couple of speakers. Nola Walker, Victoria Gutierrez, Linda Leonard, Greg Jones. Looks like we have most of them here. So we left off, I believe, at Josh Jenkins, so Nola Walker would be our next.
Nola, if you're here, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Nola was on, that was, I stated, yeah, but Nola dropped off out of, out of attendance. So the next person would be Victoria, 1351 South Street. Victoria, you should be unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to speak. I've been a longtime resident here on the south side in the Bay Creek neighborhood. I have the advantage of being a nurse in my District 13 and I don't depend on the bus for my job, but a lot of essential workers and frontline workers in my district and neighborhood do. And I'm really dismayed at the lack of transparency that I've, you know, that I see and experience. I found out about all of the details of this from, thank goodness, for, from our neighborhood advocacy group. I mean, we've been struggling here in this district with food scarcity, highly, I feel like vultures are circling overhead for the area, trying to have affordable housing. And this, you know, public transportation issue, I'd like to really advocate for putting public back into public transportation and advocating for greater transparency in this process with the city of Madison. I agree with how eloquently everybody else prior to me has spoken about equity and the commitment to equity. And in a city like Madison, I just really am dismayed that this, you know, it's not like we're Chicago or a larger metropolitan area that, you know, we can't have, A, greater transparency, B, you know, just really a demonstrated exhibited commitment to equity. I appreciate the, this, the interpreter tonight, but you know, in our neighborhood, we've historically had not only Spanish but Mung and Lao and, you know, having that representation and that transparency demonstrated to be able to have those constituents be able to participate in such an important decision. I mean, it's not just having the bus, it's everything that impacts that. It's your livelihood. It's like people have stated, you know, being able to get to a grocery store, being able, and if we're talking about walking more, I mean, this corridor is not the most pedestrian-friendly. You're walking across an interstate highway with many times, there's so much construction going on, it's poorly marked, people are, you know, caraveting down the street, there's not crosswalks, even at the Pick and Save to get across Park Street. And if you have visibility issues, mobility issues, you know, all the rest of it, it's, it's, it's a safety issue as well. So I am calling for a slowing down of the process, so much so that it ceases progression so that impacted constituents and, you know, those of us that are negatively impacted have a voice at the table to know what's going on. I really appreciate the earlier constituent and public speaker who said, who called for having a person, a disabled person or a person who rides, you know, who, who, who uses the bus is a voting member. I think all of the feedback has been intelligent, eloquent, and timely and please take heed to what we're, what we're saying. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I believe our next, go ahead, Baltazar. I'm sorry, yeah, were there questions for the speaker? Go ahead, Baltazar.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think, Victoria, thank you very much for, for your, your presentation. I think, you know, we, we heard many folks talking about lack of outreach and all of that. You can just, you know, especially in that neighborhood, you can just add just a little bit more about that, you know, especially outreach, you know, in, in other languages, you know, including other communities, if you can just add just a little bit more in that area.
Yeah, you know, in our neighborhood, we have, District 13 goes all the way up to the hospital I work at, Mariter, and in there is Bayview. Historically, there have been a large Mung and Lao population that have been there. Also down on, back into the other community garden, I'd have to look at the district, but I've lived and worked in this district for 20 years and, you know, we, we have a large Latinx population, Spanish-speaking population. So, yeah.
Thank you very much, Victoria.
Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I, we're probably not doing this, but obviously we just asked a question of somebody who said they didn't see outreach, what the outreach was, at least that's how I interpreted it. I don't know if it's worth asking staff to talk about that. Are we going to talk about that next week?
Go ahead, Mike.
I don't know how, I don't know how far we want to go down the rabbit hole of staff, but I just.
Hopefully not very far. We are going to be taking this up next week with, with the intent to vote. So if we could do a quick response, it'd be appreciated.
Sure, I can just summarize. So this, this project has been going on for about a year and a half now. At the beginning, when we were talking about higher-level concepts, we had a handful of more general public meetings. As we, after we developed the draft plan, we then held about 10 geographically focused meetings in the Madison area as well as in Fitchburg and Middleton. And then we held a number of other focused community meetings, about 50 in total. And then, uh, uh, we held a nu- a number of other, uh, focused community meetings, about fifty in total.
Thank you, Mike. Um, can I ask your question, Alder Furman? Yes, okay, thank you. All right, um, I believe I have the updated, uh, um, registrants list now. Um, so the next registrant then is, uh, Linda Lane Hertz, uh, South Patterson Street, Madison, in opposition wishing to speak. Uh, Linda, are you with us? Looks like you are. Welcome.
Uh, Linda, it's, uh, star six to unmute. There you go. There you go.
Thank you. Um, one of my questions is how much BRT is taking away from the current system? Up until September of twenty twenty, the website said that BRT will complement, not replace Metro's current service. And then by October of twenty twenty, it was changed that, um, BRT is part of an effort to integrate the existing transit system. And so it seems like I've looked and I cannot find how much this new service is going to cost versus how much BRT is going to cost and what sort of cost shifting there is. And more importantly, is that cost shifting worthwhile? Um, at one point you were told that, um, five percent, I think it was three to five million dollars would be the maximum cost for BRT because of the Small Start Grant. Yet the Small Start Grant says that the operating costs are fourteen point seven million. Um, the consultant that was hired told you that, quote, "A substantial part of the network's existing resources will go to operating BRT." Unquote. And so there's a question in my mind of how much money is going to be RT, how much is worthwhile? You've heard a lot tonight from people who feel that service justifiably is being decreased. And part of the, the rationale for all of this is that jobs are going to be more accessible to more people. I find it a bit incongruous that, um, these maps of the additional areas were done at noon. I'm not sure who goes to a job at noon, but it would make more sense to do perhaps eight AM and two thirty PM for second shift workers. Um, the comprehensive plan, page thirty one, says a racial equity and social justice analysis should be completed as route restructuring progresses so that the impacts of changes on metro customers are understood prior to implementation. And measures can be taken to ensure the system will be a net improvement for transit dependent populations. That hasn't been done. Um, it, again, doesn't seem to make sense to me why that wasn't done before you're taking your final vote on that. Um, but that's what the compliance says. You had an equity area map analysis that was presented to you at one point in time. One of those is the north side of Madison, um, around North Port, what had forty-two percent, um, minority proportions. And yet, there, that was entirely cut out. Now there is a amendment number nine that will restore partial service. Um, but it's replacing thirty minute service with service that is sixty to seventy-five minutes, which is better than nothing. But if that is adopted, I urge you to take that and take it from Delaware to School Road to encompass more of the neighborhood for probably an additional five minute ride. Um, amendment number one, which you're looking, what was, um, proposed in staff support, looks at counterclockwise or clockwise, does either one is.
All right, Linda, that is time. Thank you. Um, are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, our next registrant is, uh, Greg Jones, two eight seven seven Forest Down, uh, Fitchburg, in opposition wishing to speak.
Good afternoon.
Representing, I'm sorry, representing, um, NC, uh, NA, NAACP Dane County. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Greg Jones and I'm president of the Dane County NAACP. That stands for the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. It's the oldest civil rights organization in this country. We are approaching a hundred and thirteen years. And we'll, we'll meet that date, we'll meet that birthday in July of this year. I want to speak to this issue because concerns have reached the NAACP from various members across this county. Their concerns, while many have been laid out, uh, and outlined tonight, waiting lists, travel time to bus stops and so forth. I want to speak to the overall policy impact of this proposal and begin by saying what's needed. I look at this project, uh, from, uh, three layers, the equity layer, the quality of life layer, and the dependent riders layer. This project should have started with the needs of the riders. In some of our neighborhoods, we have dependent riders relying on this particular public transportation to get to entertainment, medical services, uh, food grocery stores, that can't be overlooked. The needs of riders should be first and foremost, who's riding these buses and what are their needs? And how do we help them meet that need? That goes directly into the quality of life. Madison has a strong tradition of meeting and advancing quality of life for all of its residents. This is a major adjustment in terms of transportation needs, transportation options, and must be considered as we go forward. Therefore, we have called for, uh, the city to take a step back, go back and evaluate all questions, all options. Make sure that they are equitable, make sure the impact is understood, make sure that individuals who live in this city and outside this city who depend on public transportation understands it, agrees with it. The worst thing you can have is a public policy not supported by the citizenry. I want to twist, uh, shift gears a little bit, talk about an article written in August twenty twenty by the Institute on Urban Research, Transportation, Urban Disparity, and Urban Planning. And that particular article said, "From funding, planning, and infrastructure to design and policing, many transit agencies essentially have built two systems with different standards, one for the choice rider and one for the dependent rider." This article goes on to say, "Let's do the hard work to achieve transit equity." There are different standards for so-called dependent and choice rider. Dependent means they're going to be picky. The primary emphasis here is on providing service, not providing good experience. For the choice rider, it's a fundamentally different purpose. That is to provide, the agency is going to provide great service to those riders. I'm saying this to you tonight. Madison, making transit equitable requires us to question how we make decisions. Making transit equitable means listening to all riders from all communities. Public transportation should reflect the will of the people and it must meet the needs of the citizens. And concluding here tonight, just a couple of other points. Uh, number one, the concerns that have come to me and the NAACP comes from residents in Monona and Fitchburg, outside of Mass. Particularly the L I Drive area in Mass. Now, there are people who in L I Drive who learned about this process a week ago, called and said, "We take the, the bus into Madison to the South Transfer Po- South Transfer Point to go to Monona, to WPS for employment opportunities and to Walmart for employment opportunity and shopping opportunities." We don't know what's going to happen to this ride. It's incumbent on city managers, public policymakers, to meet with individuals, answer all of their questions, and show them, show them through conversation, data, and otherwise, why certain options don't fit. It is the worst thing to have an option not accepted and not evaluated and not being told why, what the issues are. Number two. Uh, uh, number three, transportation policy issues that have come up. I mentioned one, the mayor and the staff, department staff must meet with individual residents. This is a major.
Sorry, Greg, but that's.
It must be changed. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Greg. Are there any questions for the speaker? Alder Miyazi, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, for Greg Jones, uh, he was just summing up what he was saying. Can you still speak to that equity part that you were summing up, please?
Hi, Greg.
Sure. One of the jobs I had in state government was the Division Administrative for Affirmative Action. That job was riddled with questions and it had policy behind it. The fundamental purpose of it was to take a look at impact. We need to understand the impact of the employment system on women, minorities, persons with disabilities, and then respond to that. The impact that must be addressed in this analysis must show not just equity, but also inclusion. In my understanding, there are certain communities that need, need that bus by dependent reason. They need to have clear convincing information about what's changes. And by the way, I've heard from people on the north side of Mass who are concerned about these new changes. So it's not just those communities I mentioned. This thing is widespread and it's incumbent on our public policymakers. The mayor, the representatives, Alders from the various, to sit down with those people and answer that question. It's not for them to reach out to you, it's for you to reach out to them. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Alder Miyazi. Um, our next registrant is, I'm sorry, were there any other questions for the speaker? Seeing none, um, our next registrant is Alina Polcova, uh, in opposition, not wishing to speak, uh, three, three, seven West Mifflin. I believe I went over some of these earlier. I'll go over them briefly. Uh, Joe Frost, other one Whitehall, Madison, neither in support nor opposition, not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions. Uh, Michael Goodman, Maplewood Lane, Madison, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Cynthia, uh, McCallum, seven zero five South Shore, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Harry Richardson, uh, four, five, six North Few Street, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Heather Wenger, nine zero seven Chapel Hill Road, opposition, not wishing to speak. Carol, uh, Buolo, forty-two zero six Doncaster Drive, you know, in support, not wishing to speak. Uh, Pauline Blatner, five two three West Olin Avenue, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Robert Hemmon, five zero two Ridge Street, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Nicholas Davies, three seven one seven Richard Street, uh, in support, not wishing to speak. Um, Cassandra Steiner, I think we heard from her, um, Susan, uh, Jaskus, ooh, I'm not going to be able to pronounce that. Uh, Jaskuski, excuse, sorry, I can't pronounce that. Um, nine zero two North High Point, in opposition, uh, not wishing to speak. And then, uh, I believe we have a few folks that, um, we skipped over because they weren't on the call or dropped off the call. Uh, is there a Kim Owens? Hello, Kim?
Yes.
You may go ahead. I'm sorry we missed you earlier.
Yes, I just, it was my fault technically with the technical stuff. Um, yes, I'm from the north side and, um, getting, um, requesting some st- local, um, issues be addressed on the north side. I really was amazed to see, um, amendment nine, and I don't really understand at all what the reasoning and rationale is that we're going to have such, you know, to go within a twenty-five foot square, twenty-five miles neighborhood, we're going to go take this, be part of line L that goes ten miles, fifteen miles out and back. You know, I mean, it seems that there's some areas that are being served by that line that weren't even in the original, um, draft plan that until you introduced it, included us into it, weren't going there like Kinsman and Atwood right along the lake. Um, you know, that there's a couple of places like, you know, even if you went around Kinsman or whether you did it around Sherman and the, uh, excuse me, Stone Road and, and the Woodman's area that, that I don't see why this, um, amendment nine has to be so long and go all the way out to Dutch Mill Park and Ride. It can, there's some turnarounds be where it just, you know, hits Woodman's Grocery and can be a point of transfer somewhere to get to Walmart, get to the Pick and Save. You know, we can serve the, um, Aberg is, you know, I saw in the two twenty, um, reports submitted that north side residents really did want some more trans- transit there. They'll go down, you know, Aberg where they've got those new apartment buildings, workforce developments there, um, shopping center. And we wanted some development, um, or we've got some issues or trying to figure out what to do with Sherman Avenue, which is really used a lot. I mean, I'm just saying amendment nine, I really, I couldn't believe to my eyes and see something so extravagant and large and something, when we ask for some local help with our, you know, neighbors that are up by, um, Tennyson and Wheeler and will have to walk over a mile to get to pack North Port, excuse me. You know, I mean, they're in the riding terrace apartments in Pick and Save. You know, there's some other things that can be included in that, like I said, Sherman and the Aberg, um, area there that's by the North Transfer Point. But, you know, there's housing going up there, they're starting to rent it actually, and so, I mean, what is the, why was, why was amendment nine, you know, drawn up as such when we were asking for just a lo- some local troubleshooting and a local route on the north side from the loss of service? You know, I mean, it doesn't mean that we have to have it running every thirty minutes, you know? I mean, that's what we're used to, but, um, it doesn't seem to make it very useful because, I mean, that brings it down Walter Street, which is not, you know, necessary, it wasn't in the draft plan. I mean, the sixteen used to come down that, but, you know, you all have it drawn up where it doesn't need to come down Walter anymore by, um, Milwaukee Street. So, I mean, I just don't understand all the, all the little commas and periods and loops. I mean, it goes against what y'all are saying about direct, you know, um, uh, rapid transit, you know, and not being so, um, circuitous and such, but, I mean, there are, the streets in Madison are not all parallel. We're not a grid, you know, like Chicago and such. There are some little.
Sorry, Kim, that's time. Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? It's seeing none, um. I see, have I, uh, missed anyone that you're aware of?
Uh, yeah, there is, uh, John Beaman.
Okay, John's here. Oh, John, welcome. Looks like you might be muted, John.
Let's give them a second. Um, it is at the, they're doing a, a group streaming at the CDA. So they may be trying to get John to the microphone. Um, if anyone is close that can unmute, can confirm that, that would be great. Um, if you're not able to unmute yourself right now, um, there should be a prompt, it may be underneath a window.
I just got a message saying that John had already spoken, um, perhaps with the number of folks that have spoken, we.
Yeah, John's already spoken.
Okay, thank you. We're just trying to circle back to make sure we got everybody in this, with, with the large number of folks and people registering late, so sometimes it's difficult to keep track.
Oh, that's no problem. Thank you.
Uh, just trying to make sure we don't leave anyone out. Um, all right. I believe that is everyone that is registered for the public hearing. Uh, thank you to all registrants, thank you to staff and other, um, Alders who are here, members of other committees who are here. Um, we will, the transportation policy and planning board will be taking up these amendments and voting, uh, uh, again in one week. Um, so if you or other folks, you know, we're not able to make this meeting, um, please join us for the meeting on June sixth. Um. Alder Halverson, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, if it's appropriate or when it's appropriate, I'd like to just make a few comments to the board.
Um, let me, so I'll, I'll formally close the public hearing. Um, go ahead, Alder Halverson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you to the board, uh, for giving this public, uh, holding this public hearing tonight. And also, uh, appreciate, um, all the registrants that spoke and this, of course, the time that the staff has put into this. So I'm, I would just want to just share a few comments, a few thoughts that I've had on this, been kind of tracking this as, as you have as well. Um, asking the same questions I'm sure that you are asking yourselves, um, is this redesign going to accomplish the goals it set out to do? Um, is it going to ensure equitable, equitable routes, reduce travel times for disproportionately impacted riders? Which according to Director Lynch's presentation also talks about, uh, primarily consisting of African Americans and Hispanics as well as others. And is it, and is it going to provide access to the job? And is it, and is it going to provide access to the jobs? Um, and so these, these goals seem to be outlined in the transit plan itself, as well as the mayor had a blog on the thirteenth that also brought some additional clarity to this from her perspective and her office's perspective. And so I just wanted to comment a few, a few of these things. My concern would be about if we have the right data. Are we working with good data initially on, on what we're looking at here to really effectively make decisions based on whether we are going to have equitable routes or if we are getting the feedback we need from impacted communities? And we've heard a bunch of uh registrants today talk about uh the various different uh impacted communities and whether their outreach has been sufficient for that. Now, I know that the mayor's blog talks about having fifty uh different uh outreach meetings over the last however long, and my question would be, i- is that, have we, have we actually gotten the engagement from the most impacted? We know that um there was one reference that the town of Madison had zero meetings. Uh, we know that there was some disabled uh registrants today that talked about not having their voice heard. Uh, these are things I think we need to consider, especially when we're talking about making a redesign that is going to impact uh as we know dependent drivers more than it is choice drivers, riders, excuse me. Um, so as we're thinking about between now and the next time you guys are going to vote on this, um, these are the things that I hope you're mulling over, as I know that I am. Um, the justification for, for, for doing this redesign appears to be in the transit plan, a lot about jobs and access to jobs. My question around that would be, are we, um, did we get good data with regards to the jobs that are available? And is there a metric on the jobs that uh we know that these areas that we're trying to, to provide routes to are going to actually give access to jobs? What type of jobs are going to be available? Um, where does that also leave the redesign with regards for evenings and weekends or third shift or second shift jobs? Has that been, metric been looked at? And I know that uh Yvonne had mentioned that, as well as Linda mentioned about second and third shift jobs. And what about the need for other travel to healthcare, education, we have dependent riders? Those are questions that I'm thinking about and I'm looking at this data and wanting to know. Of course, the big, the bigger question would be equitable. Is this equitable? Are we ensuring equitable? And, and the, the ACLU did bring up a concern about this, so this isn't just um my talking, but there's other concerns that the ACLU brought up about. Is this going to actually be in violation potentially of the Title VI? And I know that the uh, the Metro responded to that um concern in that letter from the ACLU saying that um, that they do plan on doing a full Title VI service quality equity analysis for the transit network redesign once they get closer to the final route recommendation. Uh, we've heard from Greg Jones tonight uh about why wasn't this, you know, the first thing we looked at with regards to equity, quality of life, independent riders? And I kind of agree with him as to that would be something we would look at. Some of the reasoning behind why it wasn't, and that it's going to be a to-do list, is that it would be too difficult to determine the variables, and I have concerns about that statement. Um, I have concerns that uh we are talking about an impact to the uh, some of the most um the, the riders that are going to be impacted the most, these are the ones that we are, need to make sure that we're doing an analysis on, so. There was under, one other comment I just want to make, and then I'll, I'll let you, it's been a long evening, but with regards to uh the BRT and the redesign and how they interact with each other, I know that uh Linda, one of the registrants did mention that, she had a question about how BRT will impact the redesign or if they're going to impact it. Uh, I know that the, the uh, the mayor did, they speak to this as well about how metro rapid BRT uh and transit network redesign are separate projects and acknowledge the effects of each other on each other, but that each one is separate and that they uh, neither project restricts the consideration or alternatives of the other project, nor does adopting one mean you have to adopt the other. Uh, I, I question that statement. I, I think that these absolutely do impact each other, especially with regards to funding. We do know that the, the redesign is going to impact um funding, and that's the reason that we're making these cuts in the first place, is that because of funding challenges to work within the budget. So are we going to be able to effectively do this redesign and afford it without running into equitable issues? I don't know that that's the case at this time, and I think we need to, to really take a look at what we're doing here before we move forward for a vote. I, I don't think that this is ready for, for that. I think it needs to bake a little longer. I think we have some work to do to ensure we're not falling uh falling on the wrong side of equity and run on the wrong side of what we're trying to do here. So those are some things to um, to think about. I will also submit for the record a map that I put together that does overlay the uh, the transit um mapping about low income in areas of the city, as well as I did grab off of the University of Wisconsin, um, the, it's the University of Wisconsin Neighborhood Atlas. And you can go look this up and I will send this in for the record to all the board members as well. Um, that is using the same statistical data, same timeframe, and it is high, and it highlights areas of the city that um, don't match up with what we're, our analysis. So it brings me back to my first point. Are we, uh, the data we're looking at a good basis? Uh, is it, is it the right basis? Um, considering that the, the transit report also talks about using twenty twenty-one route data. Um, so that's going to again minimize the, make it look like it's minimizing the impact on equity routes. If we actually took data from pre-COVID twenty nineteen, we would see that the equity routes have been dramatically impacted a lot higher than what we're seeing in, in this current model. So I think we need to consider those things before we, we move forward on this, so I think this still needs to bake. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Alder. Um, I'm seeing some more hands come in. Um, I, I, I want to, I gave one Alder permission to speak and I, I'm not going to deny others, but um, this is, the intent of this was not to be a discussion, and I think we're going to be pushing the boundaries of, of what we're allowed in open meetings if we continue. Um, Alder Miyazi, go ahead, please.
Chair, I, I would like to make a point of order where this was supposed to be a public hearing and we're supposed to have discussion and, and debate at our next meeting, so I don't, if a bunch of alders are going to start giving opinions, we're going to turn this into a discussion. I really think we should, we should end the meeting and do that at our next meeting.
Thank you, Alder. Um, the chair, um, um, believes that the point is sustained. Is there any opposition to um, closing the meeting? Members of the board? Alder Harrington McKinney, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, on the agenda, it says, um, adopting the Metro Network redesign plan, public hearing only, item to be adjourned, the item to be adjourned to June sixth twenty twenty-one. A meeting for board deliberation and vote, no votes May the thirty-first. I interpret that, and please correct me, I don't know, um, I, I interpret that is, is this is public comment. Um, it says that the, the board, we are not deliberating, uh, we are listening. And if that is the case, I would, I would lift that um, uh, public comment includes alders as well. We are not engaging in debate, we are listening. Our debate time will be uh on uh at the June deliberation, but at this point, we are listening, and as we are listening, uh, we should also allow alders to make their comment unless um, unless I am out of order. And so I'm not going to um, uh, support adjourning unless all voices are heard.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, what, what does happen there with not public comment, Alder Halverson did not register to speak, did not have a three-minute time limit. You use alder privilege to participate in any meetings like all alders can, and it was discussion. This is not a continuation of our public hearing. Out of respect for the board members, I would ask my colleagues to keep your comments, bring them to the next meeting, and we'll have a very robust discussion about all of these items. And let's be respectful of what we share with the public, that we are going to take public testimony tonight, adjourn the meeting until our next one where we have our discussion.
So at the end of the day, a point of order was made and the chair agreed with the point of order. It takes a two-thirds, if I'm correct, majority to overrule, um, or ruling by the chair on a point of order. Um, we can vote on this. Um, on sustaining the point of order, um, all those in favor, um, what's the, to a roll call vote?
Point of order, I'd like to have the um, uh, be a city attorney weigh in on what's in order.
Is there a city attorney present? There is not. Um, Albert's rules of order is, is fairly straightforward, I think, in this case, the two-thirds vote is required to overturn. Margaret, go ahead, please. Can you give us some guidance on this?
Uh, actually, I just want to hear you state the, state your motion again, just so that I'm clear.
So a point of order was made to stop the commentary, because this is a public hearing and it was not meant for discussion by board members or, um, or alders, um, that did not register as individual registrants for public comment. Um, when the order was made, that the meeting should end and not continue. Um, in the understanding that we are pushing the boundaries, if we haven't crossed them, of violating the meetings law, and that we, um, publish this as a public hearing only. The chair has agreed with that point of order, and I believe it requires a two-thirds vote to overturn a ruling of the chair in this matter. So there would be a vote on whether or not to sustain the ruling of the chair. If there's more than a two-thirds vote in opposition to the ruling that I have made, then we will continue, but whatever the board wants to do. So if we could please have a roll call vote on whether or not to sustain the point of order that the meeting should conclude. Free, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Grant Foster?
Could you click, verify the eye and the no on this? So I mean, I think gen- generally somebody would have to object to your ruling, and then we, I don't know if an eye is what.
So please, please either um object to my ruling or um agree with the ruling. Does that make it more clear?
But an eye, an eye means we agree with the ruling?
Yes, and I would, I would mean you would agree with the ruling.
Okay, I.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes, uh, so Alder Foster has voted aye, um, this continues.
Keith Furman?
Aye.
Barbara Harrington McKinney?
No.
Randy Udel?
Aye.
Christopher Mcaho?
Aye.
Tom Wilson?
I will not vote unless there's a tie.
All right. Walt Azar, Deanna Santana?
Aye.
Margaret Bergamini?
Aye.
And Carolyn McAndrews?
Aye.
That is seven votes, um, aye, one vote no, that motion carries, the point of order, um, is sustained. Um, the meeting is concluded, um, I would uh, train motion to.
Over adjournment.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Margaret, thank you. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting for the evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Close no. Chair believes the ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.